Good evening and welcome to the Lewiston City Council Regular Council Meeting for Monday, November 25, 2013. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Brad Cannon. Please remove your ball caps.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item of business is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items you wish to bring to the attention of council. You are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the city manager. In consideration of others wishing to speak, please try to limit your remarks to three minutes. Are there any citizens' comments this evening?
I'd like to comment on, I guess, what seems to be the continuation of the Area of Impact Board. It seems like since two of the council members are not going to be on there anymore and the county is willing to wait till the new council is seated and should be allowed, I guess, to pick their own board members to represent the city in this matter. And what I understand, Dennis Ortmann resigned that position. So I guess it would only be fitting that I think, you know, our mayor should do the same thing. Because this new city council should be able to pick and choose people to sit on this board unencumbered by any, you know, undue influence or anything. So as far as I'm concerned, it ought to be a moot point. And I think the county's willing to wait till the end of January, till the new council gets seated and, you know, get their feet wet. Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments this evening? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to read the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to read the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
Should we wait to see if Council Ortmann's getting on the line now?
Okay, apparently he's not in communication, so... So is there any discussion in reading the consent agenda? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Approving the minutes of the November 4, 2013 special meeting and the November 4, 2013 work session. Accepting the minutes of the August 1, September 5, and October 3, 2013 Historic Preservation Commission and the September 25, 2013 Planning and Zoning Commission. Approving the final plat for the Zayjenk Gardens subdivision, a four-lot subdivision located on 11th Street between Borough and Cedar Avenues on .98 acres of land. Approving the first reading of ordinance 4604 by title only, an ordinance implementing the city council's decision in ZC 0113, declaring that certain real property be removed from the R2A low-density residential zone and included in the C4 general commercial zone. Amending the official zoning map of the city of Lewiston and providing an effective date. Approving Resolution 2013-61 by title only. A resolution approving a development agreement between the city of Lewiston and Idaho Municipal Corporation and Daniel Van Coman and Kimberly Neely individuals to permit new residential construction at 2016 Hemlock Avenue, Lewiston, Idaho, accepting consent to the future formation of a local improvement district, authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest respectively said agreement and providing an effective date. Approving Resolution 2013-28 by title only. A resolution accepting a public stormwater system easement from 19011 Iscatlal LLC, a Washington Limited Liability Company, and providing an effective date. And approving the vouchers payable for October 11 through October 24, 2013 in the amount of $1,541,430.99 and for October 25 through November 7, 2013 in the amount of $1,341,338.62. And this excludes payments to Albertsons.
Okay, council, the consent agenda has been read. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion by council? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. We have Councilor Ortmann on the phone now, so motion carries six-zero. Move on to the active agenda. First item of business is area of city impact negotiations. Mr. Bennett, would you like to give us an update on area city impact negotiations?
Thank you, Mr. Paul. I talked with Commissioner Doug Zennar a few weeks back about moving forward with the area of city impact negotiation process. The next step in the process was for the council and for Nespers County to appoint its three representatives to meet as part of the negotiating group that would discuss the ACI. And then there would be three citizen members that would be selected jointly by those six to complete the process. It'd be a total of nine participants to discuss that. And the county and the city have both solicited input from citizens who would be interested in serving on that group. And I think, I know the city has received a number of applications, the county has as well. Where I left it with Commissioner Zennar originally was that he suggested that maybe we would want to postpone any negotiations until after the first of the year. There were two reasons for that. One was the potential unavailability of one of the county commissioners for an extended period of time. The other was, of course, the change in council based on most recent election here in Lewiston. I told him I would look into that, review that, discuss that with council. I did that. I think the consensus was to move forward with the negotiations. So what I did was I notified Commissioner Zennar that the date that they had suggested for completing the selection process of the members of the team would go forward. That will be this Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. at the Braemer Building. And at that time, the three members from the county, which are the three county commissioners, and the three representatives that were approved by the council, that would be Mayor Poole, Councilor Kleberg, and in the absence of Dr. Ortmann, Councilor Randall. And then with that, and the meeting would be only for that purpose, merely to select the remaining three members to round out the team. And then the actual negotiations wouldn't begin until next year. Now, it's clear that after the new council is seated, there will be a need to select one additional council representative to take part in those negotiations. But that's kind of where we are right now.
Any comments, Councilor Kleberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I haven't spoken with Commissioner Zennar, but I did speak with Commissioner Havens at some length on this. And the county is totally willing to wait until the new council is seated.
Yes, I understand that.
And I don't know about the consensus of the council, this current council here, but I know that the only two that I was copied on was Councilor Stevenson and myself. And I was willing to wait. So I don't know how the votes shook out or who wanted to do what.
It was split right down the middle.
Well, there are seven councilors.
Okay, three and a half, three and a half.
I think...
I'll explain that to me. Councilor Daniel said that he'd be willing to wait if it was legal to do so.
Which, and that's my understanding, is if there, I understand the mayor's position was that he didn't want to put us in a position to face legal action for delaying.
Right. And the legal issue is, is the statute that calls out the selection process is not flexible. It basically says 30 days after you select your three, meaning the council, you have to have selected the last three. The last day we can do that is Wednesday, November 27.
So if you violate the statute...
Statute doesn't allow...
Regardless whether you're willing to waive it or not, is...
If there's anything in the statute that allows a waiver... I mean, certainly, if that's what the parties want to do, then whatever the consequences are, if somebody wants to raise a stink about it, they would have some legal position. But the statute doesn't allow for any kind of waiver of the timelines on it. There's a 30-day period of time to select the remaining three. And then the nine-member board or commission has 180 days to recommend new procedures or revised procedures, whatever they want to do.
Well, what about a waiver on the 180 days if the new council's not going to be installed?
There's no provision in the statute for a waiver of any of the timelines.
Okay.
That's just the way the statute reads, so...
And personally, I think that we're putting the city at considerable liability risk if we don't meet those statutory requirements. It puts us in a very weak position if we have to move forward through court on the ACI process. So I think we need to make sure that we're compliant with the statute.
You know, I think it may even be intentional. You don't see too many statutes written that way. This statute is written so that there are absolutely, there's no leeway in these timeframes. And I think it's done intentionally that way to make sure that the process moves forward and doesn't just sit there and while everybody delays and delays and delays and delays.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, at the end of 180 days, if there's no agreement on the party or the commission can't come to any agreement, then the statute provides for it to go to the district court to make a decision. So I mean, I think that's why there's no waiver of any timelines. There is a set timeline, one, two, three, and if you can't make an agreement, it goes on to district court, so...
Okay.
You do have two members on your, of your three that are going to be remaining on that board. So you have a majority of that board that'll be remaining members.
No, I'm willing to discuss with council if you, and I think it would be a prudent course of action, is to decide if any of the continuing-serving council members want to fill in for me as appointment when my term is up, that they're there during these conversations and discussions so that once I'm off, that they're seated and they don't have much of a learning curve to come up on, or if one of the council-elect would like to be appointed the alternate for my seat. And I have no problem in talking about that, or if you think that's a good course of action that way, you don't lose any continuity in this process going forward. Councilor Daniel?
Would we be allowed to have a councilor-elect?
The statute calls for three elected officials from the city. So I suppose technically they're elected officials, they haven't been sworn in, but that's what the statute calls for, three elected officials.
Whether, or we're going through a transition and they're just appointed alternate so that when my term is over, that we can continue the process, I think that'd be the best way to move forward without losing any continuity.
My alternate's already recorded, right?
That's correct. Council Randall will be taking your place, Dennis.
Thanks.
Would you want that added to the next council agenda? Or did you want to try and do that tonight? I mean, if you're going to consider one of the candidates-elect, they probably would want to have an opportunity to weigh in on that if they were interested or not.
Right. So...
If we show up on Wednesday morning at 10 o'clock, is there going to be at least two of the three county commissioners?
Yes, there will be.
Councilor Daniel?
I've been, you know, for postponing all along, but like City Manager Bennett had said, you know, my only concern was whether or not it was legal or not. We're hearing that we would be exposed to potential liability, so I guess that's my, that's where I am. So I would be for postponing it if we weren't under any potential liability.
So my three and a half, three and a half.
If I could offer this, and I guess it'd probably be up to the council's pleasure, I'd not, personally, I don't have a problem with you sitting in on Wednesday or if Councilor Daniel's got time, since he'll be continuing on the council. There's two of us right now, so...
I could, I could certainly sit in on Wednesday. I would have to, I'm not quite sure of the, how long the process is going to take and how much time is the time commitment for going and going forward with it. I could certainly sit in on Wednesday.
Or like you said, I don't think it's completely inappropriate to see if any of the council-elect would be interested in participating either.
Well, then...
Council Randall?
Go ahead. I feel that we should give a chance to the council-elect to fill that one spot.
Is there somebody that can make those phone calls in the next 36 hours?
I'm sure we can, yes.
Well, we do have two of them here.
Mm-hmm.
But I think it would be fair to offer to all four.
I guess it depends on how much importance you place on this next meeting, which is only to pick the remaining three members of the council. My only concern with the council candidates-elect is that on such short notice, it may be difficult for even a candidate-elect who would want to do it, to be able to do it simply because of their time commitments this week already.
Mr. Ray?
Councilor Daniel?
I know during the campaign season, there was one candidate that did volunteer to be on that position during the Lee Women Voters debate. So I don't know if he'd still be interested or not, but you'd have to turn around and ask him, but so it's an option.
Okay.
I think, Mr. Mayor, you can appoint whoever you want to be on that commission, as long as you're still mayor. Initial three appointments or mayoral appointments, you usually make those appointments. So I think that would be up to you, what you want to do, certainly, but however advice, how much advice you want from the council, but I think it's a mayor's appointment.
Okay. Well, I'm going to take any ideas under advisement. And I guess, council-elect, if you are interested or something, have a burning desire to want to sit in on these discussions moving forward, give me a call or contact City Hall so we can make that decision.
And we'll do that, I'll do that tomorrow. I mean, we'll make sure that we get the word out to all of them to let them know that potentially there could be action taken prior to their actually taking office on an appointment to serve in that capacity. So make sure they have a chance to let us know what they'd like to do.
Okay.
So do I take it, then, that in the meantime, you plan to attend the meeting on Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, council, any other discussion on area city impact negotiations?
I'm going to move on.
Okay, we'll move on. Next item of business is Resolution 2013-62. I'll entertain a motion to read Resolution 2013-62.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to read Resolution 2013-62. Is there any discussion by council? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries six-zero.
Approving Resolution 2013-62 by title only. A resolution approving an addendum to the 2007 yard waste agreement between the city of Lewiston and Idaho Municipal Corporation and Ecosystems Incorporated and Idaho Company, extending the term of the agreement for the collection and processing of yard waste and biosolids, authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest respectively said addendum and providing an effective date.
Okay, council, Resolution 2013-62 has been read. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2013-62.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2013-62. Is there any discussion from council? Councilor Dan?
Could we get a quick recap about what this is going to be doing and why we're doing this?
Sure. Mr. Bennett?
We are just about finished with the contract between Leita Sanitation and the city for the operation of a new composting facility on the east side of Lewiston. Probably saw the story that was in the newspaper the other day. The site is located above Clearwater Paper out off of Industrial Way near the livestock The negotiations with Leita Sanitation took a little bit longer than expected to work out the details of both the site selection and the terms of the operation that will be done there. And as a result, there's some concern about whether or not the facility would be constructed in time to meet the city's end agreement with ECO for taking new material to the ECO site. So we proposed a six-month extension with ECO to allow them, or allow us to take additional material to them during the construction of the new facility out on Industrial Way. ECO's contract with the port already had that provision in it. They were allowed to take material until June 30 of 2014. So there wouldn't be any change there. But along with that, the ECO contract with the Port of Lewiston ends in June of 2015. So if they were to allow us to continue to take material there until June of 2014, they would have one year to shut down. They indicated that it would take them a full 18 months to do that. And so they asked the city to request that the port extend the lease agreement with ECO for an additional six months as well. I met with the port last week on that issue, and they are going to take that up at their next meeting in early December. But indications are at this point that, you know, they won't give favorable consideration to our request.
Any other questions or discussion on this? Those in favor of approving Resolution 2013-62 say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries six-zero. Next item of business is Resolution 2013-63, possibly approving a collective bargaining agreement between the city and the Service Employees International Union. Mr. Bennett, would you like to lead the discussion on this?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This is our third collective bargaining agreement in the past three years, third one that also that I've participated in. This is with SEIU, Local R14-687. These employees are those that represent a variety of specialties within the Public Works Department, within the Community Development Department, and with the Parks and Recreation Department. And they are a smaller number than both the police and fire. And this is, again, a three-year contract that's being proposed. The current one expired a little earlier this year on September 30. And the negotiations went very well, I think, and there weren't a lot of changes to the agreement from previous. The wage adjustments are consistent with what we are paying to our other union and non-union employees, 1.2 percent this year. In the second and third years, it would range from 1 percent to 2.5 percent. That's going to depend upon what the CPI is. Certification pay, which has been paid to many of the union employees, will be standardized so that additional certification pay, which would start next April, for those that are eligible, that have certifications that are essential to their job requirements. But there is, again, a limitation on the number of certifications that any one employee can acquire. Again, it's a three-year agreement. The labor position that currently we find in many of the different departments like Public Works and Parks and Recreation Department will modify that a bit to create some additional career path for employees that start as a laborer but want to complete their career here with the city in order to eventually aspire to a higher technician-type position that requires certifications. This is, I think, a good move to try and keep employees who come here to train, but then if they don't find an opportunity to advance, then they're going to be looking to take that training that we've given them to another entity or to another business. The additional cost of the proposed agreement is $43,000 in the first year of the contract and $54,000 in each of the two following years. The funds for the first year have been budgeted in this current fiscal year budget. So I think, all in all, I think this is a good agreement, and we would ask the council as favorable consideration of that, to ratify that so we can send that back to the union for approval and signature. The union's already approved the agreement, but it hasn't been signed yet.
Mr. Bennett, did you use any outside counsel to help negotiate this contract?
No, just our council, Ms. Shropshire. The union did not use counsel.
So probably, what we've done in the past, we have had outside counsel represent us on a lot of these union negotiations being in effect over the last three years. If your projected increases are what they are, that's pretty close to what we'd almost pay for counsel, wouldn't it?
You know, when we did our first one, two and a half years ago with the police, we started off in that vein using outside counsel to help represent the city. And it became clear pretty quick that that just wasn't an effective or efficient way to do business. The union simply wanted to do away with that. And they wanted to sit down face-to-face with the city and work things out. And that approach has worked very well on that agreement and on the past two as well. I think it just shows that both the management and the staff side of the equation are anxious to conclude a good agreement. They like working here at the city, and we like to support and maintain the staff that we have. And this is a very fair and very reasonable settlement.
Counsel, have any questions for Mr. Bennett? Councilor Daniel?
So the $43,000, is that based off of the CPI increase?
That is, that is a combination of the cost of living increase and the additional certification pay that would be paid beginning in April of 2014.
Okay, so the second and third years, is that taken into account, the step increases that we give as well?
No, the second and third year, it takes into account a full year of certification pay.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the step increases are included?
Right, those aren't included. Nothing that's normal or contemplated, existing benefits, basically, if you will, only something that's new and additional. These are new and addition. I think you could argue that the cost of living increase is not really additional, but, you know, our goal from the beginning has been to be, make that consistent throughout the city. the city, and we've been able to accomplish that so that all the union groups and the non-represented employees get the same thing.
Counselor Daniel?
I guess the point I was trying to make is, once you take into account our COLA increase, that kind of resets their base. And then we give a step increase, that resets it again, basically. And then we're giving another COLA, and so that's why I was trying to figure out what the actual first, second, and third-year numbers are. And that's why I was taking into account the step increases.
Understood.
Now, with the CPI, why do we use the CPI debut versus another CPI?
I can only guess that the reason that it was originally done, because it's been done that way for a very long time, is to most closely approximate what the cost of living is in this sector of the country for this classification of employees. But could another CPI be used? I would guess the answer would be yes. But it just has not been, it hasn't been done. I don't know that there would be a significant difference. But, you know, that's probably the best answer as to why we use what we do now.
Counselor Cleaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Seems to me a few years back, when we had these discussions, there was a floor and a limit on the CPI, and we found ourselves in a situation where the CPI was actually a negative number. Yet the minimum was guaranteed was up here, one and a half or something like that. And I thought we had taken care of that issue. I mean, if CPI is zero, I would think that the rate should be zero. I'm not going to hold this up, but I thought we had taken care of this previous, some previous contract negotiations.
Well, it's very rare that the CPI ends up in a negative number. When it did a few years ago, that's the first time I can remember in ages. It could happen again. It's always potential that that could happen. But, you know, over the term of the agreement, which is three years, when you're trying to establish what's a fair cost of living increase, and you're trying to anticipate what that cost of living increase might, or actual cost of living factor might be, you're trying to come up with something that's both reasonable and most likely will capture the value that falls within that range. I still think that that's a rational way of doing it.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Randall?
Are we still on the discussion for the reading of the?
Yes, we haven't even brought it up for reading. I just asked.
All right.
Mr. Bennett? Just, have you got any questions for him to clarify before we?
I'm fine.
Read.
I got another question, and then I'll have some statements when we actually read it. So my question, the reason why I keep bringing up the CPI is the CPI takes into account healthcare as well. It weights it as one of the, I think, the eight, eight or nine things it weights, but we pay 100 percent of our employees' premiums. Is there, do we ever, is there a way that we deduct that weight off of what we give for the CPI?
I don't believe that has been done in the past, no. We pay 100 percent of the employee, and then we pay, I believe it's
Eighty-five percent.
Eighty-five percent of the spouse and/or other dependents. But I don't believe that the value of that benefit has ever been used to modify the cost of living that's been applied to any of the bargaining agreements.
Any other questions of Mr. Bennett? If not, I'll entertain a motion to read Resolution 2013-63.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to read Resolution 2013-63. Is there any discussion? Counselor Randall, or Counselor Daniel?
I'll vote to read it, but I'll have some more statements, so.
Any other debate? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion carries five to one.
Approving Resolution 2013-63 by title only. A resolution accepting and approving a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Lewiston and the Service Employees International Union, Idaho Association of Government Employees, Local R14-687, for three years commencing October 1, 2013. Authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest respectively said agreement and providing an effective date.
Okay, counselors, Resolution 2013-63 has been read. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2013-63.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2013-63. Is there any discussion by council? Counselor Randall?
I don't have any objection to the contract except for Article 11, Section 2 on overtime. We talked about this once before, the last sentence in that section, which would be in the next page after that. It says, "Abundance compensated through use of sick leave, vacation, holidays, or compensatory time shall be included in hours worked to determine hours worked for purposes of paying hours worked in excess of 40 hours." In other words, they're going to use non-productive hours to base their overtime on, which we shouldn't have that at all. You're giving the use of sick leave, vacation, holidays, and compensatory time as a means to determine your overtime. And we had a discussion about that last time with the exempt people. And I think that should be, otherwise, I'm not, I'm for the contract, but that one little phrase in there where we're giving overtime based on non-working hours, I think that's a flat no-no, as far as I'm concerned.
Counselor Dan?
I agree with Counselor Randall. I do have a couple more questions, I apologize. If I indulge, I got a couple questions for.
Go ahead.
Article 8, Section 6, there's a, I don't know if it's missing or Article 8, Section 6, it says, "With the sole exceptions of Section 1, 3, and 8 of this article," but there is no Section 7 or 8, and so I was curious what we're missing. Was it something favorable to the city, to the union, neutral?
What is your information, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counsel Orton, what is it?
Mr. Bennett, is that several ruling been an issue?
It's, well, what it is, is this Section 8 that is being referred to doesn't exist in the Article 8 of the agreement. It is referred to in two places, in Section 4 and in Section 6.
I'm assuming it's left over from a previous contract and maybe it got absorbed somewhere else, but.
I think Section 8 was probably, it is a union security agreement that has been, or statement that's been pulled.
I just want to make sure we're not missing anything, so.
That could happen.
I think if we go back to the notes from the meeting, we'll be able to determine which of the sections this refers to. My guess is it is Section 5. But this all deals with the ability of the union to have membership and to meet with the city to deal with union grievances. So, but we can go back and review that and figure out, and make that adjustment. It's really a correction.
Of course, Section 6 refers to the Right to Work Law, since that's a state statute that would have precedence unless we have something specific on here.
I guess that's my worry, is that, you know, if we're voting on this tonight, it's referencing a section that doesn't exist, and then we're going to go back and, I mean, are we going to end up voting on those two sections and getting back added in or getting clarification? Because if they're just added in after we take this vote, I don't know if that's proper.
It says the city attorney, I hate to put you on the spot, but we are.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think Mr. Bennett is correct, that it's probably a typo that carried through. I think it should say 1, 3, and 5. Those are the ones that don't particularly outline, that are not in violation of the Right to Work Law. And I will take a very quick look at it again right now if you have other discussions, but I'll just make sure that that's correct. I think it was, there was probably a typographical error that just carried through, and we didn't catch it.
You got another question?
Yes, Counselor Daniel?
Mr. Bennett, why do we enter into a three-year contract if we don't have to? Why isn't it just a year contract or a two-year contract? Why is it three years, since we don't even have to enter into negotiations in the first place?
Well, you have to enter into negotiations as long as the city council recognizes the union as the representative and bargaining agent for that particular group. If the council were to decide that they wish to not recognize the union, then it would be different. But as it is right now, this is the way that it works. As far as the three-year agreement goes, I think it's more desirable to lock in the agreement and to minimize the fluctuations in what happens out in the financial world so that the city has some certainty for an extended period of time as to what its costs may be over time for the agreement. It also gives the union some security too, that rules and regulations won't be changed during the term of the agreement. So, you know, my past experience has been that it's always better to have a longer-term agreement than a shorter one. If necessary, some agreements will have a reopening provision in there if there's a particular issue that could not be resolved during one bargaining session and might, have to be decided at some point during that next agreement period. Plus, it takes a lot of time to do a negotiation, so it can take, you know, six, it can take six months to work through an agreement. Well, by that time, you're halfway through the year, and you're about ready to start over again. So I think those are some of the reasons why, you know, we have determined a longer-term agreement, three years, longer than, you know, just a one-year agreement, but not so long that we can't react to changing conditions.
Mr. Mayor? Can I make a comment to the council? I've negotiated some union contracts from the union side out of the mill, and three years is not uncommon for, and like Jim's pointed out, there's times that you may have, like the first year, you'll have a signing agreement, the second year, you'll have a pay increase, and the third year, it'll be open for negotiations. I mean, there's all kinds of different versions of contracts that you can have. But, yeah, the three-year contract is a very standard contract, and sometimes they go longer. If they think the economic situation down the road justifies it, they may even go longer.
Counselor Dan?
I won't harp on that for too much longer, but now I'll get into more of my comments of why I'm going to vote against this. Article 19, Section, I guess it's part of Section 1, but everything after the CPI, I don't agree with the step increases based on our salary matrix being included automatically in the contract. I think the city should retain the flexibility to decide whether or not we're going to give pay increases year to year based on our budgetary needs. And from my perspective, the reason why we don't do that, it's not just for this union, but for all the unions and the non-represented, is it's a lot easier for this council to justify raising taxes when the budget season comes for things like streets and the library than it is to be completely outright honest and say, "We're giving, we're having to raise taxes because we're giving all these pay increases every year, no matter what, because we're locked in."
Well, I think for me, it's awful hard to complete the city's work without a workforce because we can't do it ourselves as council members. And the union agreement provides stability and some certainty over time for both the city and the workforce. And I think this is, agreement is mutually beneficial. And I think that it's one of those things that you may disagree with. I think going forward, if you think it's a serious negotiation clause that you need to start locking in on your union negotiations, I guess first the council needs to decide if you choose to recognize the unions. Because really, by state statute, the only union you have to recognize is firefighters. And so I guess that's the first juncture you can try to make as a city council going forward if you want to continue recognizing the unions. Myself, I don't think that would be a smart step or a wise step, but that's something that to consider. And then the other consideration is if going forward you want to retain the union and continue recognizing the unions, then I guess sit down and have a negotiation strategy. These are the key points in your, that you want to have across the board, compliance on your contracts, regardless of it's fire, police, or SEIU. And if it's the overtime issue or whatever, I think those are targeted issues that you want to put on there, on the table, that these are things that you want to have as a standard agreement across the board with your unions. But I think you need to have some goals and objectives going forward if you're going to do that. And the time to do that is as you enter into the union negotiations, not at this time, not at this juncture. Counselor Daniel?
I agree. It would have been nice if we actually had discussions on this contract and talked about where we wanted to go with it and then not be added to the agenda and the contract given to us less than four business days ago. That would have been nice, especially since our normal protocol is that we get everything a full week ahead of time. But I'm not saying we don't, we shouldn't recognize the union. I'm just saying that in this contract, there's nothing that I can see that actually benefits the city except for providing a cap in the CPI. Every, I mean, it locks in the pay matrix. It locks in, if we ever make a change to the personnel policy as far as sick leave, they still get their, I mean, being able to accrue 960 hours by itself, that's the benefit. Well, I don't know why we'd pay out additional amounts guaranteed, no matter what. We're allowing them to accrue 960 hours worth of sick leave. That's a huge benefit right by itself. But even if we went to go change the personnel policy to address that, the calls would be, "Oh, well, that only affects the non-represented people. All the unions have it, so now we have to keep it because it's not fair." And there are certain things I'd like to have addressed, and you're right, I think the better time to bring this up would have been during a discussion that we never had about this contract.
Well, maybe, you know, more apropos would be a discussion about union contracts in general rather than focusing on one additional contract. But just keep in mind, I mean, the key principle of collective bargaining is bargaining. And in order to, and I know your position is that there are a number of things in contracts you'd like to see removed, the question on the other side would be, what are you willing to do to compensate for that? What's the incentive for removing the language? You have to think about that.
No, no, and that's fair. My, I guess my point would be is, what have we ever given up in the past 10 years in these contracts?
I missed that comment, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Daniels asked what the city, or what the unions have given up in past contracts in negotiations.
I just want to make another point.
Counselor Dan?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counsel Orton.
Part of the process of negotiations is not usually giving up. We're not in a negative environment. You know, there have been concessions made by our, all of our unions on salary. I don't think we're talking about a major point, something that a future council is going to discuss and bring to the table that should be done at least a year ahead in the negotiation process and not at the tail end. Once an agreement has been reached and we place our faith and our negotiators to negotiate for us.
Counselor Cleaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd agree 100 percent. Unfortunately, those talks never happened. I agree with Counselor Daniel. We just received this new contract. I'm not saying I would have sat there and nitpicked the whole thing and wanted to sit at the table because that's really not my job. I'm not a contract negotiator or anything. But for this to be negotiated, and here it is, and then when we ask questions, people want to know what the motives are or this or that, I think they're legitimate questions that we've been asking, so. I'm not saying I'm going to toss the contract, it's just, you know, it would have been nice to have information, say, this summer when negotiations start. nice to have information, say, this summer when negotiations started. Are there things that we would like to change or things that we would like to bring to the table that could be discussed during the negotiations that would have been appropriate?
I think that would be appropriate actually for all union negotiations because I sense that some of the issues that pervade all of these agreements would be the same, and they would apply, you know, largely to all of the agreements. So it probably would be a good idea to have a, an opportunity for the full new council to sit down and delve into that issue and determine, you know, what are the priority issues in general that the council might want to see addressed during upcoming budget, I mean, labor negotiations and, you know, put it on the record, so to speak.
Counselor Dan?
You know, just for the record, I think the things I brought up, you know, they're not, they're not mean. I think they just provide the city some, if they weren't in here, it'd give us some flexibility while still, I mean, it's a 25, well, 27-page contract. It'd still give a lot of assurances to the union. It'd still give a lot of generous benefits. It's just, those are things that I would prefer not have been in there.
Oh, I understand that, Counselor Daniel. In fact, on the issue of hours worked that both you and Counselor Randall raised, I agree with you 100%. However, that's not what's in the contract now, and removing it from a contract is a totally different proposition. There has to be groundwork laid to be able to do that and an opportunity to find out what the alternatives are for the council as far as structuring future collective bargaining agreements.
Any further discussion on Resolution 2013-63? Okay. We'll take a roll call vote for approval of Resolution 2013-63. Would you mind calling roll call, city clerk?
Yeah, would you call the roll?
Does the mayor say aye?
No.
No, she wants to call a roll call vote.
Roll call.
Oh, just Clinton, Daniel, Counselor Daniel.
Absolutely no.
Mayor Potem Cannon?
Yes.
Mayor Poole?
Yes.
Counselor Cleaver?
Reluctantly, yes.
Counselor Randall?
No.
Or, Counsel Orton? Counsel Orton?
Counsel Orton?
Yes. So, motion carries four to two. Next item of business is vouchers payable to Albertsons for October 11th through October 24th for $112.88. I'll entertain a motion to approve the vouchers payable with Counselor Daniel abstaining.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve vouchers payable to Albertsons for $112.88. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side. Motion carries six zero. We'll move on to unfinished and new business. Is there any city council comments this evening? Counselor Randall?
I attended the last airport authority meeting and Doug Mattoon came up and gave us, gave us a presentation on their proposed marketing plan, and it was very interesting. They were going to break the United States down into regions and have mailings out to the different regions at different months of the year. And this is to market for the airport and particularly for the south side of the airport. And the estimated cost, I think, was like around $17,000 after they get all the mailings and everything done. So it was interesting. I think also, I think, believe our city manager is going to make arrangements for Doug to give a presentation to us here in the council.
Okay. Any other city council comments? Counselor Daniel?
Maybe it was just a clerical error, I'm not sure, but back during the budget negotiations, the new position with the library, the IT position, it was brought up. The amounts were 70,000, it was supposed to be 50,000 plus the benefits. But on the city's website right now, it's listed for the salary itself being 50,000 to 72,000 plus benefits.
Because all of our positions have a range, but our policy is to hire at the opening step of that range unless someone possesses extremely great credentials that might warrant revisiting that and opening it as a higher step, generally one step higher than that.
Okay. So it's not going to be 72,000?
No, will not.
Okay.
Any other city council comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Orton?
Just, just, I am thinking about all of you next week or so while I'm on the beaches of East Atlanta.
Thank you, counselor.
Thank you, counselor.
Put your sunscreen on, counselor.
Any other city council comments? Okay. I'd just like to thank the veterans and the folks that came out for the Veterans Day Parade. It was really nice to see the amount of folks out there to pay homage to those that served and it was nice to see, see the parade out there. So thank everyone for being a part of that and the Veterans Council for putting it on. They did an excellent job. Mr. Bennett, any comments this evening?
I'll just note that our next work session is on December 2nd. We won't be meeting before then. We have a fairly full agenda for that work session. We'll be reviewing the major remodel definition that's used in determining and triggering public improvements. The Historic Preservation Advisory Commission will give their annual report. We'll be discussing the Annabelle Osborne property, which is the little house and property up there near Modi Park, which was gifted from the Idaho Foundation to the city. And we'll also be starting our discussion of the Transportation Capital Improvement Plan update. And as Counselor Randall indicated, we expect to have Mr. Mattoon there along with Mr. McCann to discuss the airport's marketing plan that they're putting together.
Any advisory board and commission appointments this evening? Okay. Any work session agenda topics? Counselor Daniel?
I would like to discuss, it doesn't have to be in the next month or two, but just sometime soon. I'd like to discuss Chapter 24, Section 24-3 of City Code. It's in regards to parades, so.
Okay.
Can I make another comment?
Sure.
I should have said this during council comments or even right before the contract was voted on, but with it being passed, I'm assuming that it's based on the assumption that that one section that I had referenced, I was missing Section 7 and 8, that it was referring to Section 8 being Section 5 and that Section 7 doesn't exist?
Yes.
It wasn't happening.
Okay, okay.
We've got SEIU representation here, Mr. Bennett?
What article?
It was Article 8, Section 6.
Section 6?
Yeah.
Seventh section, maybe?
Well, it, Section 6 is there, but it references Section 8, which there's no Section 7 or 8.
Same in Section 4.
Seven is religious conscientious objection to union membership, that was deleted section. And Section 8 was whole harmless at so expensive an issue to defend the indemnity and whole harmless to the union.
So is that supposed to be in there?
Should be.
That was moved up into the inferior part of possession.
So 8 should be changed to Section 4 then, and then the reference to Article 8 in Section 4 should be struck. Or is 5 for union business? Okay.
I just want to make sure it's done.
Sure. Any other work sessions moving forward? I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session regarding personnel per Idaho Code Section 67-23451B. So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session per personnel per Idaho Code Section 67-23451B. We'll just be meeting and adjourning immediately after, no action to follow. Counselor Daniel?
Are the council elects welcome to join? It's usually...
Not normally.
No.
No, only me.
Not on this one.
Don't the city council, who are invited in, but that's not, would normally not be the case.
Can I say something?
Sure.
I've always understood it that we normally invited the council elects in.
We were never invited in any executive sessions in the last, from the last council.
I think, I think even Counselor Randall was invited because I think that's, but if...
No, I know I was.
Yeah, I...
We weren't.
Six years ago.
We weren't four years ago.
I think if they can be, I mean, I don't know if it requires a vote, but I'd like to invite them if they're present.
I think on, regarding this one on personnel action, I'm not comfortable doing it at this time. So those in favor of going into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. We'll re-adjourn into executive session in five minutes.